...to order Monday, April 24th at 6:00 PM. Dr. Knight, if you would lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Any virtual public comments?
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Executive session not at this time. Call to order salute to the flag has been completed. School committee members and student reports, excuse me. Resource Subcommittee, Mr. Stevens.
Resource and school building needs are meeting tomorrow night.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. School building needs?
We're meeting tomorrow night.
Oh, that's you. Okay. Sorry. Policy Committee. Mr. Horgan's not here. Student Support Subcommittee, Dr. Knight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The meeting for the Student Support Subcommittee on March 29, 2023. Pam Rivers and Thomas Hughes, Rosemary Reynolds, Superintendent Robert Jokela, Ron Demanci, John Thompson, Eva Kelly, and myself were present. The meeting began at 5:31 PM. I express concern regarding safety or possible gang-like activity in follow-up of a meeting at the Human Rights Commission where Torian Pridgen spoke. Mid-year eye-ready data results summarized and shared with the Subcommittee. Pilot IEP meetings also. Myself inquired about the seven-step DESI vocabulary, and Mr. Thompson clarified to the Subcommittee about what the program is all about. Ms. Kelly reported on English language learner via Zoom. Eighty-nine percent of our students participated in the access testing. She also spoke about the sheltered English immersion endorsement requirement and how many of staff members have that endorsement already. Mr. Hughes motioned to adjourn the meeting at 6:30 PM. The meeting for the Student Support Subcommittee on April 12th of this present year. Present were Ms. Rosemary Reynolds, myself, Mr. Hughes. Staff members, Superintendent Jokela, John Thompson, Eva Kelly, Ron Demanci, Nick Packard, Mr. Lemey, Mary Alexandra Molina. Attendees, Mr. Horgan. At 5:40 PM, the meeting began, and motioned to approve the minutes by Mr. Hughes and seconded by Ms. Reynolds, the meeting from, that was the one from March 29. Mr. Lemey discussed Fitchburg High School graduate data and trends. The report was compiled by Ms. Emma Brassard. He explained the disparity between female graduates and male graduates who attended college and their graduation rate are higher as well. Female students tend to also earn more awards than our male students. The class of 2021 had 20 less graduates, much lower college admission than our class of 2022. A large number of our current students are planning to attend post-secondary education. I asked what job opportunities are available for our students prior to high school graduation, always focusing on making sure that our students are provided with the best so that they can be successful. Mr. Lemey explained that Great Wolf Lodge has great opportunities for our students, especially for hospitality. The parks and recs programs through the city provides opportunity for our students. Mentoring is included also. I also inquired about the summer opportunity programs for our students, and Mr. Lemey explained a bit about Upward Bound and other programs through Gear Up. The Mount Wachusett summer programs is also beneficial. He said he also shared his special, his personal experience with them. Mass Hire also has a program that is run through our high school. Mr. Thompson explained our Fitchburg High School summer program, summer school program, where our high school students have the opportunity to work for an hourly rate of approximately seventeen to eighteen dollars per hour. Mr. Hughes also explained other opportunities throughout the city for summer jobs for our high school students and the students of Goodrich Academy also. Mr. Lemey discussed the junior ROTC program for those interested in the military branch. Market Basket also has an amazing program for our students, he said. He also discloses that the data presented does not reflect self-employment, out-of-state employment, or federal employment. He explained that the data presented and careers they get into right after, let me say that again. He explained that the data presented and careers they get into right after high school or college does not reflect the trajectory of their careers overall. He also committed to retain as many students, we are also committed to retain as many students in Fitchburg as we can, especially in the education field. Also, he said, the average earnings went up for our students who have graduated. Just a little more here. Mr. Hughes commented about the college effort in terms of our retention housing industry available, et cetera. Excited about new industry coming into our city to recruit our students. I also inquired about the grant summary on the agenda. Superintendent Jokela explained that the grants presented are grants that have been accepted during the academic year. I also inquired about grants that may or may not have strings attached to them. Mr. Horgan explained how certain grants, that certain grants may have strings attached to work. Superintendent Jokela explained a bit about sustaining programming when accepting grants through the city budget. Ms. Demanci explained the difference between entitlement grants versus competitive grants. Outlook, long-term goals, objectives, and absorbing the cost after the grant has expired. Mr. Thompson clarifies that all grants accepted are tied to our strategic plan. I also inquired about school choice regarding what's taking place at Goodrich Academy. Mr. Packard explained the school choice procedure and our district not following the protocols for school choice as are, as we are supposed to, so is another hundred school districts in the area. Because Goodrich Academy is a specialized program, school choice is not applicable. Students must enroll into Fitchburg High School and then transfer over to Goodrich Academy if they are eligible. There is an option for a tuition in for other districts who send their students to Goodrich Academy. There is a talk about a lottery system for our high school. We can run up to two lotteries per year, depending on the number of seats that are available per grade level. We are currently accepting students into school choice year-round, which is becoming problematic for our younger grades. School choice was created to fill empty seats in classrooms, not creating new classrooms. Ms. Reynolds inquired about school choice sending versus receiving. Mr. Packard clarified that we are specifically discussing receiving school choice. We can only control receiving school choice. We have no control over the sending school choice. We can only limit by grade or by school. Mr. Hughes inquired about the school code and why they have to apply to Fitchburg High School. And Mr. Packard explained that Goodrich Academy is a specialized program and that it is illegal for us to accept school choice students directly to Goodrich Academy. We have to accept them to Fitchburg High School and then determine if they are eligible for the program at Goodrich Academy, which is an extension of Fitchburg High School in a different building. The meeting was adjourned at 6:32 PM. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Knight. Any questions or concerns? Erin, I thank you for that very substantial report, Dr. Knight.
I'm sorry. I was over the week before, so that's.
No, that's quite all right. You said what you had to say. Thank you. School personnel and executive committee have nothing to report at this time. Moving on to student representatives.
Good afternoon, fellow school committee members. I'm so happy to be with you all today. Sadly, Journey is unable to be here with us due to her not feeling well, but still, the past three weeks have been extremely successful for the schools around the district, so here is some information I'd like to share. Firstly, AP students from the high school were given the opportunity to attend the AP Day Field Trip at the Capitol, allowing them to help in the decision-making for a law regarding whether or not all colleges should accept threes for AP scores. Early college students at FHS were also fortunate enough to have Governor Healy, Lieutenant Governor Driscoll, Secretary of Education Tuttweiler, and many other officials come down to the school to discuss the early college program with some students enrolled in it and the benefits of having it within our schools. Secondly, the theater program at Fitchburg High School put on Beauty and the Beast: The Musical, which was incredible and extremely well-done. The theater program worked very hard on this project and spent hours after school to make it happen. Thank you to Mrs. Greenlee's, her staff, and the entire cast for this special performance. Congratulations. Following this, Ms. Rivera, one of our amazing Spanish teachers at our school, put together a princess boutique for students to come down and obtain pieces for their prom. She gave out dresses, jewelry, shoes, gift cards, and much more to many students, and the event turned out to be a huge success. Thank you to Mrs. Rivera and all those who helped assist her in this amazing project. Next, at Memorial Middle School, Sally Criggan, a counselor-at-large, worked with eighth-grade students, helping them to create their Action Civics projects in preparation for Civics Day. Shout-out to Casey LeBlanc and Addison Allet for being invited to speak on the panel at the DCU Center for Open Sci Ed. Longchamp also had a successful month in which they had their spring dance and over 160 kids attended. They also have been working heavily on their end-of-the-year book and will be finishing with an assembly by pying an administrator in the face. With this, South Street Elementary School students had an eventful and exciting week before break, watching baby chicks hatch within their very own classrooms. Students also had a fun time having the opportunity to write in their journals and draw pictures. Goodrich Academy students had the privilege of continuing their community service at Goodrich Academy under the guidance of Brad McNamara. Students also got to be involved in the first JROTC program at Goodrich Academy. Some events coming up that we'd also like to inform you about are the Multicultural Family Night planned by Fitchburg Public Schools. On Wednesday, April 26, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at 376 South Street, there will be displays of art, arts and craft activities, free food samples from around the world, and much more. Fitchburg Public Schools will also be hoping an open-mic night on Friday, April 28, at Fitchburg Cultural Alliance on 675 Main Street. April is National Poetry Month, and the Fitchburg Public Schools will be having this event for students, educators, parents, families, and community members to come together and share poems they've written, or maybe just their favorite poems in general. There will be music, comedy, and food. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Yes?
Yes. I just wanted to shout out to all the high school students who participated in the Beauty and the Beast play. Ms. Rosemary and I, we went, it was awesome. We enjoyed ourselves tremendously. Great job, Fitchburg High School.
Yes.
I'm just going to ask, this, you're having poetry reading, music, whatever, is this going to be a regular thing, like maybe once a month or something like that?
I'm not sure. I know Mary is planning it, Mary Alexandra, I think. She's planning it, but I'm not really sure if it'll be a regular thing, but if it is...
If I have to miss it this weekend, I was hoping I could look forward to another one.
Any further questions? Prove the minutes for the previous school committee meeting of April 3, 2023.
Motion to accept them.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded to accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Communications. Nothing at this moment. Public comment, period. Anyone wishing to make public comment, please? The Rostrum, thank you.
Hi, Jessica Jacobson, Fitchburg. Give me one second. All right. I'm here tonight to speak on a few items that are not on the agenda. Many parents want to see our kids have a better understanding of the freedoms and the Constitution. We would like to ask a question without anyone looking at their smartphones. What five freedoms are protected under the First Amendment? Can we think of it in our head? So, think to yourselves, can you list the five without using your devices? We are, only 2% in groups, it's a new study that has been going around, and only 2% are able to answer that. We're failing our future, our future. They are. The freedom of speech, the freedom of religion, the freedom of peaceful assembly, freedom of the press, freedom of petition of the government regardless, regress of grievance. How do we expect our government leaders and our children to protect our constitutional rights when we have, we don't even know them ourselves and we're not teaching them adequately? We have organizations and teachers pushing socialism ideologies. We should be teaching our children how to love the country and preserve our freedoms. And great freedom fighters like Crispus Attucks, if anyone hasn't, doesn't know of them, please look them up. Crispus Attucks, A-T-T-U-C-K-S. And Mercy Paris-Warn. They're both very great freedom fighters from here, right here in Massachusetts. We shouldn't be teaching about current Marxists and teaching our youth to be oppressed. Hal Shirtlove is a great example of the government not protecting our First Amendment. He has emailed, he has mailed me, not emailed me, he has mailed me a copy of a constitutional guide that he wants to donate to go along with a constitutional history class, if you guys will do that, that the students can take home, and I'll give you that. For our public high school students, so that's Monty Tech and Fitchburg High, however many you guys would need to go along with that, so they're right here, and I'll give one of you guys the copy that he mailed me. I've also emailed a list of questions multiple times, questions that haven't been answered. So, nobody's responding to me, I don't, I don't really, whatever. There are, there's one question about the bathroom policy, but that was kind of touched upon earlier by Aiden Horgan, which hasn't been answered. We're against those strings that are being attached, as Dr. Knight just mentioned, you know, like forcing our little girls to use the same bathrooms and locker rooms as males, but you guys don't want to really talk about that, so. Many of us parents don't want MASC, the M-A-S-C organization, writing our school policies. It wasn't really clear, because again, a lot of those questions I've had to do with MASC, and a lot of the schools that have them can't get out of them once they're in. There's only been one school that I can get the name of that school district that was able to get out once they applied, but I don't have it with me right this second. Once they're involved with them. They tend to push a very liberal agenda that does not reflect all parents and all children. So, my first question, or my first statement to go with the MASC is, there's no financial benefit to outsourcing to MASC. All their policies are free. They're, it's open public records. You can get them yourselves if you want their policies, you get them, we don't have to pay them $10,000 to have them write it. But then, if we do, we're stuck in a three-year contract with them, from my understanding, but nobody's really responded to me, so maybe I have a misunderstanding of it. This would lead to better, oh wait, I'm sorry. The policies are not cooperated, and you know, Fitchburg can crib onto them if you want, for free. This would lead to better decisions, as you can talk to peers and, you know, have council meetings about them ourselves, and actually incorporate local parents instead of Boston. If you agree with outsourcing some of the policies automatically, are they automatically going to be incorporated, or do we get to discuss them? Like, that hasn't been answered either. I don't know. Because again, it's a three-year commitment, so it's a pretty big deal. Because what works for Boston may not be best for us. Does the policy committee still get to go over the policies from MASC and make edits and changes or vote on them? Does this remove all our options of democracy from the policies of Fitchburg Public Schools? I would like to know, also, there was a homeschool on the agenda, but I haven't had any questions or answers to that one, because the homeschool options were brought up in one of the policy committees that I couldn't attend, but I didn't get the answer to that, but.
Ms. Jacob, you're approaching your five minutes.
Yeah, this is my last question. The homeschool students who participate in this program are the entire funding, like an IEP, so do you get that entire funding? If it's like, it's like that, like what programs are we talking about? Do homeschoolers get to do trade, or are we just talking about band? Are we talking about sports? It wasn't very clear to the public. But we don't know what kind of things you're trying to incorporate, the homeschools. That would be it.
Thank you.
Jaclyn Wedgey, Fitchburg resident, I'm speaking first on Agenda Item Number 823-250. We shouldn't be outsourcing our policies to bureaucrats in Boston, they should be determined locally. We have two excellent student representatives, have you asked them for their input on policy? We have parent-teacher associations, have you asked for their input? We have local community organizations, have you asked for their input? We have the Fitchburg Education Association, have you asked for their input? We have other school committees in the area, have you asked for their input? For instance, did you ask why the Leominster School Committee considered withdrawing from MASC? What were their concerns? Having attended some of your policy meetings, I see no evidence that you have involved any of these stakeholders. The solution to being behind on policies is not to remove local control, it's to remove the chair of the policy committee who doesn't hold meetings regularly and to start soliciting input from local stakeholders. In other parts of the country, many functions of government, including education and policing, are handled at the county level with economies of scale, and people pay much less in taxes as a result. What we're supposed to get in New England for the high taxes we pay is local control at the municipal level. Now you want to gut that and give us the worst of both worlds, high taxes without local control. What's next? Are you going to allow people in Boston to run for our local school committee? This action item is just wrong, wrong, wrong. On Agenda Item Number 7, Policy 5713, I have repeatedly asked that students' rights to medical and bodily autonomy be added to this policy, and I get ignored. That's wrong too. On Number 3, Student Representative Report, we shouldn't have a junior ROTC program, we should be promoting peace, not militarism in our schools. You know, every year, Martin Luther King Day, people like to say, "We honor this man," but you completely ignore his whole legacy of speaking up against militarism, not just in terms of the Vietnam War, but the whole entire military-industrial complex. Why are you teaching these kids that you want to glorify militarism? That's not the right values.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment?
Mrs. Kelly, or Mrs. Hooper?
Hi, everyone. Thanks for letting us come by tonight. I'm going to pass it off to Deb really quickly. We're going to talk about a great program we have coming up, it's part of her leadership training program that she's participating in.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm here to invite you all to the Fitchburg Public Schools multicultural event to be held this Wednesday from 5:00 to 7:00 at South Street Early Learning Center. We have a packed agenda. Mrs. Kelly's passing it out now, but we're going to start the evening with some finish dances. Then we are going to see some Irish step dancers, ukulele strummers, a US Taekwondo demonstration, Native American storytelling, and we're going to end the evening with an interactive salsa dance. We have over 100 students participating, and we have some central office staff as well, so hopefully you can all come and join us. We'll have some free food and goodie bags for the kids. Thank you.
All right. Got it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First up on the agenda for this evening, we have the Crocker Elementary School construction update. Ground has broken, we haven't had the official groundbreaking yet, that's scheduled for May 9. But tonight, we have just a brief overview of where we're at, a little over one week into the project, so, Mr. Roach, take it away.
Yeah, thank you. Exciting. So, so there was a meeting with the Crocker Elementary staff on April 13. It was an overview of the two-year project. We introduced the Colliers representative, Matt Dunn, he'll be the senior construction representative onsite, mostly throughout the two-year project. In addition to the contractor representative, the project superintendent is Matt Wilder. So, they were both in attendance. It was a, it was a positive overview of kind of what will begin and has begun during the April vacation week. So, we did review, and we'll review here quickly, just the phases of the project. They can kind of be broken down into three or two with some subsets of the two, but there'll be work that's starting now. It actually started on April 18 last Tuesday, which is perimeter fencing around the back of the building, about eight to 10 feet off of the building, you know, sort of in the, in the actual perimeter of the facility. That's been installed, pretty much completed as of, I think, today. The lower playground structure was also removed by Fitchburg DPW, we really appreciate their help in that. In addition to that, the side access road will be widened to allow for a great deal of construction vehicle traffic that will be happening. Starting May 1, really more or less, the modular classrooms demolition will begin May 22, and really, for the next three to four, five months, a lot of site work in the back of the building, and we'll look at a picture of that so you can get a sense, because they need steel to be delivered. It's set to be delivered on September 23. That's really the building blocks of the, of the, of the new Crocker Elementary School, so the foundation will have to be in and set and cured so that they can start to erect the actual bones of the building. The second phase, which will commence around December-ish of this year, right through completion in August of 2025, is building construction, and that'll be external work, internal work, and a significant amount of work. Quite a few employees will be there, 100 to 150 construction workers every day, so you can imagine that we also spent some time talking about, you know, traffic and how to maintain a school that will be in session for two years during this, this large project. And then really, in the summer of 2025, demolition of the existing Crocker Elementary School as the new one is set to open, you know, which should be a great event, you know, in September of 2025. So, that's the, that's the view of what the building will look like with the bus loop in the front and parking area and so forth, so excited to get to that point. There are a lot of measures I think the public should be aware of. Fontaine Brothers has, has completed a number of public school construction projects, they have a very thorough query process. All contractors will be queried in advance of setting foot on the Crocker Elementary site, even though they won't enter into the building, they'll be around the building. They have a system with helmet stickers, so you can easily observe someone, if they don't have that sticker, that means they need to come off immediately. They have a communication plan weekly, we actually received one today. And then we did meet with Fitchburg PD, Fontaine Brothers, Colliers, school administration to discuss kind of traffic patterns and how we would ensure that that community area as well, which does include Bigelow Road and Whittamore Street, would have the minimal impact as possible. I think we have a good plan on Whittamore. All residents were delivered a letter last Tuesday. So, phasing drawing, so to be clear with staff and families that are visiting the current Crocker, those are now available in the teacher's lounge area, so everybody can take a look at this type of drawing here. So, this is Phase 1 that's happening until May 19. You can see the perimeter fencing around that sort of yellow area that has been constructed. In that yellow area, we'll... In that yellow area, starting May 1st, we'll start digging. So we'll be able to see earth moving and hills becoming flat and so forth. So that's really the first initial couple months, month and a half of work that will be taking place. And then the modulators will come down in preparation for the real work to commence, you know, fast and furiously over the summer months, right up through to August 2025. The orange outline or orange that you see in that architectural rendering there is the new Crocker Elementary School. So that will be really the work that takes place for the majority of the period of time will be sort of working on the exterior and the interior of the building between June 23rd till August 2025. Some initial, you know, work that was done last week is you can kind of see the fencing there. They have a green fabric that's placed on the fence so that it does ensure some privacy to the classrooms as well. These are high fences. They're about eight feet high. In addition to, you can see where a playground was. DPW came down, and there will be two trailers there probably in the next couple days. And that'll be the Fontaine Brothers superintendent's offices and construction areas. So work is really, is moving quickly. You can see that, you know, there will be, the week of the 1st, they'll be widening that access road, really taking down a lot of the trees on May 1st because it's a professional development day, and those trees are next to the building. So chainsaws all day while third and fourth graders are in class, probably not a good idea. So they have coordinated that. And then the foundation site work will really commence around that same exact day. So again, this is where we're going to get to. You know, it's going to be an exciting two years, I'm sure. But that's the view of what that building will look like. It's actually spray painted an outline of the front entrance with those two sides there so that before the fence going up, the teachers could take a look and walk around in what will be their building in just a few short years. So that's kind of where we are now, and glad to take any questions or comments.
Have we, just a consideration about the construction for next year during the school year. You know, it's going to be right outside the window of the existing structure. Is that, how much of the conversation is that, you know, that nuisance kind of sent? Is there any precautions or accommodations that we have for that?
There are certainly a significant amount of precautions that a company like Fontaine takes as a company that's built many. They're currently finishing Dougherty High School in Worcester, is one of their big projects they're working on right now. In addition, though, we do have Colliers who represent us. So that gentleman, Matt Dunn, will be present. Essentially, we'll have an office at the Crocker Elementary School. And, you know, today, I sent him five bullet points after a meeting with Mr. Bolak over there, just doing a quick site walk around of just questions we had on little things. This will be happening probably weekly, if not daily, over the course of the time. I think they're really trying to get the lion's share of the loud, you know, tractors-in-the-ground work done this summer. And the foundation installed this summer so that when school does come back, returns in September, what will happen is hopefully, the building exterior is up pretty quickly. They do put them up fast. And then a lot of the work then, you know, over the course of that phasing, will be inside. Now, there'll be a lot of people there. There'll be 100 to 150 construction workers daily. Parked in the back, and they have that all mapped out in terms of where their parking is. It's kind of to the right of the orange building that you see there, inside the red perimeter of the fencing. But, you know, it's going to, there will be days, I'm sure, that there's some distraction from it. Every time that happens, we will work with Matt Dunn, who will work with Matt Wilder, the superintendent for Fontaine, to try to minimize it as best we can. School's still the priority.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they've been really good about, you know, as you see on the first phase, they met with us and they understood. MCAS is going on through the first two weeks in May. So they've delayed, to some degree, some of the work that they want to be doing already because of our MCAS schedule, and they were totally fine without adjusted. And when they adjust, they have to adjust with, sometimes, I think we have 14 subcontractor, filed sub bidders on this project. They have to work with many of them because it sets their schedules back. But they were like, no, we understand. That's a priority. We'll do what we need to do. So they seem to be really good to work with, you know, as of, what's today, April 24th?
Yes. That's really great. I think that's really important because Colliers is the construction management service. They just kind of make sure that they're doing the project by the team.
They're our owner's project manager.
Right.
So they were brought on with the MSBA. You know, Bob, Mr. Jokela would know better than I would, but they've been with us for quite some time. With the architects, SOM, they represent us. So when we have an issue, we talk to them, and then we work it out with Fontaine Brothers, who's the contractor. And they work for us as well. But Colliers represents our needs and what we're, you know, what we're expecting out of this project.
That's really important. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
I was just thinking about the safety procedures that we're all so highly aware of. Are you incorporating them? There's going to be a lot of people around. They should be on board, like, consistent with all of us, right?
Oh, of course.
Big job, right?
So they do have a, they have a very extensive process for their own personnel. We are meeting, we did meet with Officer Boudreau from Fitchburg PD about a week and a half before April vacation to review the traffic pattern. We're meeting with Officer Hashi and Howe, in addition to Fitchburg Fire later this week, to update the fire drill and then sort of security process around, like, Alice drills and that type of thing. Same thing. Because now with the fence tight against the building, it does change some of that a little bit.
But that is, that thought process is incorporated in all of us.
We set a meeting already. We were communicating last week to meet this week with, you know, because they were on vacation last week, Crocker staff. We're going to meet with them this week with Fitchburg PD and Fitchburg Fire about that.
Is that open, is that an open meeting, by the way?
Crocker Building Committee meeting?
The Crocker, well, that's a sep, are you asking about meeting with Fitchburg PD and fire around, like, fire drill procedures? Not typically, no. It would be something we would just schedule with Crocker, but I can report out on it, for sure.
I would love that, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
No problem.
Next up, actually, I'm going to ask Mrs. Donna Hildreth to come up and give a quick overview of the new application that's available to the community in terms of First Student, new First View application. We have, I think we have 300 people who have downloaded the app to see where the bus is and on its route to either picking up or dropping off their children. And Mrs. Hildreth is here to talk about how to get access to it and how it works and everything else.
Well, thank you for inviting me this evening to talk about our First Student First View app. It is an app that follows our big yellow buses right now through First Student. What I'd like to do is take the opportunity to review with the information that we've got posted on our Fitchburg Public Schools website for our parents to go on and look at and to achieve getting to get the app. So I think Mr. Johnson is, you pulled it out.
I don't, no.
You don't have it?
I do not, nope. Did you send it to me, Donna? Did you send it to me?
I'll just talk through it.
Yeah, just, yeah.
I'll try not to talk too much. So the first, there's, we put up several different files. One is the letter to the parents telling them that the app is available. A lot of the information is very repetitious. If you've, if you go on, you'll see it kind of repeats the same thing, but it's getting the information out there. The, then there is an announcement. The announcement is showing the parents what the app will do for them. It will show them where the bus is anytime during its route. It will show the arrival and departures to our schools, to their stops, which they designate and put in what they want to see for a stop for their student. They have, they can put multiple stops in. You can put as many, if you have four children, you can, four different buses, you can put all four in there, and it will give you a notification however you set it up. One advantage is it gives us, it allows notifications from either the bus company or the district to go out to the parents who are using the app if their buses run in late, wait for weather, wait late for a breakdown or anything like that. And those notices would go out from us. One of the next pages is, oh, here we go.
That's all I have, Donna, so.
All right, I'll keep talking. All right, so then we have, I have two different sets of directions on there. One is a quick reference. Somebody who's really good at an app could go right on there and choose their route, add their PIN, put their stop in, put their notifications, and they're really good to go. Someone like myself might need the step-by-step directions. So I have those in there also. The step-by-step directions gets you right from, download the app, find your school, find your district. So it's a little bit more.
My apologies, Donna.
That's okay.
I have it now. Is this what you were looking for?
Nope. But that's more the administrative one.
These are the four that I have.
I sent it to you in an email from me.
From you?
From you and, from me and Bob. I sent it to you and Bob. So while John's looking, I'll keep, I'll keep talking. So also on there, I have put, because it is a little tricky in some ways that each route is labeled. So each school has a route. It has a bus number, and the bus number is assigned to a route number. And the parent needs to go in and find the route number. So on the website, I have put a cheat sheet. So if you know your child's number, all you got to do is find that route number and as well as all our routes, which they can find on our website as well. I think, in closing, the First View app was created and offered by First Student. It took several years for us to get it in going, but I've put in a few children, and I think the app could be very advantageous to our families. All the information on our website is offered in English and in Spanish. There is a support system, and that is provided by First Student. Currently, we have 219 users, which parents administrate and clerical, and it covers about 300 students. So they've got 300 students in there that they are, they put their stops in there, and they're receiving notifications. So I have Dee Hildreth in there, and I have my stop, and I put a half a mile radius, and it tells me when the bus is a half a mile from my house, you know? So it's designed, the parent can design it how they want to use it. You know, it's, yeah. So I hope in the next few weeks to send out emails to some of our parents and our bus riders so we can improve the user, the users in this program. I think in the fall, it will be ideal, you know, as our buses at the beginning of the year runs, you know, they tend to run late. And I think that'd be, it's a great tool for parents.
Donna, I have the PowerPoint up, I think.
There it is, okay, yeah, go ahead. There, that's the letter. That's the letter to the parents telling them that the app is available. The next one is, so this is the parent view. This is the announcement that tells them this is what it's all about. This is what you can do. The next, this is the quick directions. Somebody who's really app savvy, this is it. All you need is that in our district view, and you're all set. And the, this is the introduction letter. So it gives the parents the information that they need to sign up. Where it's highlighted in the yellow, the city, the state, our district, our district code, and then it tells you that you're going to need your route name and number. This is just an example. As I said, each school has a bus number and a route number. And in this case, like Crocker 33 is Route 103. So the parent would need to select the route number, 103, and then pin the map with their stop.
Awesome.
That's my cheat sheet for those who know their bus number. They can just find their route number real quick. And this is the step-by-step guide. I mean, it goes right from the moment you load it up on your phone or your desktop. And that's the information for the First Student customer support. And then they can find all the information on our website. You just go to the homepage and click on First View.
Two quick questions, Mr. Chairman. Two quick ones. Hi, this is great. This is a really awesome app. I'm sure a lot of people are going to find this very helpful.
I hope so.
I hope so, too. Quick questions. So does it work regardless of the time of day? If it's a half-day, it still works? It's not only for regularly scheduled bus routes?
Half-days, half-days. Like, early release might be a little bit trickier, you know, because you're, you'd have to change your notification.
Right.
If you have your notification in there for a half-day, because you can put in a morning route, a midday route, and an afternoon route.
Okay.
So if you wanted to be really savvy and put it on midday, yes, it would work on your half-day.
What about for sports games?
It doesn't do anything with sports games.
Okay.
It will, you can do the, our late program, our 21st Century buses.
Okay.
Are also in there.
So the late bus?
Yeah.
That's very important.
That's a really big advantage for our parents because sometimes those run late because, you know, you've got a spare driver or whatever driving a route in the dark.
Getting home at night?
It's a late, yep.
Absolutely. And lastly, field trips? I'm assuming no, but.
Not really.
Yeah, okay.
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Awesome. Well, this is great. Thank you.
Rosemary?
Yeah, okay. Couple of questions was, are there any cameras on the buses?
Oh, yes, yes.
Will also incorporate cameras, or?
No, it's not live. Our cameras are not live. Like, you can't log in and look at a bus.
Can't see if there's trouble go on your child's bus.
Yeah, you can't do that, not yet. I'm sure you will see that in the future, you know?
And then, do you know, I don't mean you specifically, we know, who drives the buses? Who the drivers are?
Oh, yes.
Does the school require that, and who the substitute driver is? And are they corried and all of that?
All our drivers are corried. So they're corried by the state through their license, and they're, all our drivers are also required to come and do a query with our, with the Pittsburgh Public Schools every two years.
Okay. So this, this one application is like, like if you've got directions on, in your car, is a line rather than pictures?
Yes.
No pictures, only the?
So what it would do is if you were to, if you were signed up for the app and you wanted to see where you, just wanted to see where the bus goes, you could just put that Route 101 in, and you would see when the bus is coming near your house or approaching school. If you put a PIN in for your stop, the pins that I did, I did a half a mile, I assume, okay, the bus goes into that geofence a half a mile out, then my daughter or son can run right out there and be out there for the bus on time, you know? I think it's an advantage for our parents who work in the afternoon, so that they can know when their children's bus has arrived home.
So obviously, when new, school year starts, parents would go through this whole process all over again, because it would be a different bus, different schedule, et cetera, et cetera.
Could be, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, they'd wanna renew and make sure that their buses are.
It's a nice addition, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Continuing in sequence, next item we have on the agenda under my report is the Massachusetts Association of School Committee's Contract Policy Service.
Could I speak first on the, Mr. Mayor?
Fine. I just kinda need to set the record straight a little bit. MASC is not a Boston organization. MASC is a school committee organization. In fact, I don't think Boston is a member of MASC. MASC is made up of 10 regions throughout the state. Our immediate past presidents were Ellen Holmes from Ashburnham in Westminster. She's been president twice. Devin Sheehan from Pittsfield was the previous president of MASC. And this year's president is Stacy Rizzo, who is from Revia. And the vice president, or vice chair, I believe is from Marlboro. So the division, it's made up of school committee members. They're not, they're all elected members from local school districts. And they make up the board, those 10 regions make up the Board of Directors for the state school committee. They hire a executive director. They help all the school committees throughout the state. They are resource for us. Our local school committee, we have Tracy Novick, who is a school committee woman from Worcester, and who is employed by MASC, has presented to us our local school committee. And so it's not a Boston organization. It's local people throughout the state who are all school committee members, and that MASC also has subcommittees like we do. And from MIAA to legislative branches to personnel, and they're available to help us in any way that we may see fit. Pittsburgh-owned former mayor and school committee, Mary Whitney, was president of MASC. She's also a lifetime member. Our Pittsburgh teachers have presented many times at the annual conference, of which I have been to for 14 years, and have been our delegate for the past 14 years to our conference in Hyannis every year. Our administrators and school committees, we have, we have presented at the conference to, it's over 1,000 school committee members that show up every year. So it's a great resource to us. I have been on many committees for MASC. I have been on nominating committee for our District 4 that we're in, we're District 4 and District 9. I have led a legislative session for all of our area legislators to meet with school committee members. So MASC is just a great organization that supports school committees throughout the state. Thank you.
May I address to what you're saying, Peter? So if somebody were to say, when we seek their help or their advice, that we're outsourcing, is that accurate? I don't know this word outsourcing, if it refers to like, you know, organizations or educational businesses, or, does it refer also to this organization?
To us, is that?
Let me try to answer that, because I think it's an inaccurate characterization, frankly. They, as Mr. Stevens said, are largely volunteer-driven organization with an executive director and very limited field staff, but they have access to a library of policies that have been enacted, and they are current on policies that are being enacted or being legislated from the state level. So as we've spoken at the policy subcommittee meeting, and Mr. Horgan, feel free to jump in at any point, we spoke about the alternatives to the, this policy service. One being having an attorney present, which years ago, we had an attorney present at all policy subcommittee meetings, and at a rate of probably nowadays, they're probably $300 to $450 an hour. Looking at the policies that we have, we have policies from the 70s, 80s, 90s, early 2000s. We have policies that were just approved at the last meeting. So we have policies that are dated. Some of those dated policies may be fine. What MASC can help the school committee policy subcommittee is look at the prior, the policies that probably need to be revised, and also help guide the school committee policy subcommittee with regards to current policies that may be contemplated by the Department of Ed. So with that, the ultimate decision is the school committee on the policy, the policy language. So in that light, it is not being outsourced. It's a local decision, as many of the decisions that a school committee makes regarding policies and budget.
So they, they are not the Department of Ed?
They are an independent organization.
An independent organization? Is it a business organization? Do they make money?
It's a nonprofit organization.
Nonprofit.
It's the school committee members from throughout the state.
Yeah.
Who are elected by their local people. It's, if I could spread, spread myself a little thinner, I would be on one of the posts, but I, you know, I can't do anymore.
Yeah.
So it, what it is, it's all local people from throughout the state, from the Berkshias to Cape Cod to, you know, all of our counties.
Mm-hmm.
I think, Tom.
Okay, just generally.
Thank you. So I just wanna be clear, they're not writing our policies, right? They're, they're purely in a consulting role.
Yeah.
Am I right about that, Mr. Horgan? I don't know. Okay.
I mean, they have an entire manual of policies that I'm sure they'll be taking from, and it's the, you know, like you said, it's approved, it's checked by their lawyers, it's adopted in many other school districts. So they're, I think the right word is just guiding us through.
Right.
An enormous task of turning over our entire policy book in the course of three years, which is a big undertaking. So I think it's really just, not really giving the MASC a vote in our decisions, but really giving them a voice, an expert, well-informed voice to guide us through this process.
I think an issue, perhaps an unspoken issue, but is, when things are referred to as already in law or guide or whatever it is, many, many people, myself included, want local autonomy. We want to be a strong regional voice and not?
I think that, I think that's what it is, Rosemary. It's local autonomy. It's not coming out of Boston. It's local school committees who have developed policy. And Aiden will tell you, and he knows, because I've done policy committee, and it's an unending task, you, he never will complete the job. And, because there are just so many. So if you get something from MASC, which comes from local school committees from throughout the state that have worked for them, we take it as a local and go through it and adopt them to our needs.
Adopt or reject?
To our needs.
And modify.
And modify. So we're not giving, we're not turning our voices over to?
Just taking those 1970 and 80 and 90 policies and updating them, and then we will have a book of updated policies that we can look at and say, this fits the needs of Pittsburgh. And it all comes back to us. They're not being written by, they're being written by every school committee in the state. And we're just going to adopt them for our needs.
Thank you.
A little bit different. I'm a lifelong learner. Last year, I attended the national convention that the Mass put together. I just wanna make sure that this year I am able to attend, so if you heard anything about when it's a deadline, we would get the same treatment. I would love to go back again. I was able to learn a lot and find out how to do.
Register, register before July 1st.
July 1st.
Make your reservation before July 1st.
Same thing like last year?
Same as last year. Do it, you can do it through Central Office, through Mary. And the conference is November 8th, Wednesday, November 8th it starts.
Correct, thank you.
And Pittsburgh will be presenting again pet therapy, at least one presentation this year.
I don't know if there's just any other comments by, you know, the chair, I think, you know, address my point of view. I think just, there were some comments made about a, an agenda of MASC. It is an apolitical organization that advises schools on following the law and protecting all students and school committee members as well. So just wanna be clear on that front. Okay, thank you.
Well, this may seem out of the ballpark, but it just popped into my mind. Stakeholders allowed to, to get information from the MASC or discuss things?
Yes.
Stakeholder, all the stakeholders in the city?
Yes. Any, any school committee member can call Glenn Kucha, the executive director, with a question, and you'll get an answer.
That's one, we're one stakeholder, but the public's a stakeholder, too?
No, no. It's a school committee organization.
So?
Now, if, if somebody asks you a question, you could then ask the question, but the general public could not call directly.
Thank you.
Next up, we have an out-of-state field trip. This trip is to the Flume Gorge up in Lincoln, New Hampshire, scheduled for May 26th of this year. This trip is in place of the historical White Mountain trip. So we're doing really just a day trip, where the students will learn about geology and ecology in the White Mountain region. Unfortunately, Ms. Colo could not be here tonight, so I guess really I'm just pinch hitting. Just informing you, because it's out of state, we need school committee approval.
So can I interrupt? I'm sorry. Just so you know, we did receive word back in March that they weren't gonna be able to accommodate us because of staffing issues. So instead of sending all our sixth graders to the White Mountains, right now, we have Long's Joe, who decided to bring the students to the White Mountains just for one day. And that's what this ask was for, the 60 students at Long's Joe.
Next up, Mr. Roach, can you just provide a, a quick grounds update as it's springtime and the flowers are starting to bloom and the buds are on the trees and the sand may or may not be on the sidewalks or the roadway still around our school, so?
Yes. So met with the school, the director of facilities, Joe Richardson, and maintenance manager, Mark Hesperian, last week to develop a plan. They had a great idea of having sort of a rotation of weekend cleanups at the sites. So they were soliciting the school building maintenance team, the custodial team, to volunteer for overtime on a Saturday or a Sunday, so we can have teams of eight to 10, maybe 12 members who are willing to do overtime, and they can get to Rangold one weekend, then move over to Pittsburgh High another weekend, and Memorial, et cetera, right through. So that's the current plan right now. There was a strong response from the school building maintenance team to the offer of doing this, so I think we'll be able to put it, put together. And I think the goal was somewhere in that range of like eight to say 12, 15, depending upon the size of the property. You know, Pittsburgh High obviously being the largest, but, but others. And this would really help, I think, with making sure that all those, those tasks that, you know, can be hard to get to at the end of the shift, do get done in the exterior of the building.
Question. Would it be possible, when you have a schedule set up, just as they do neighborhood cleanups in the city?
Yes.
EPW coordinates and volunteers show up? Could, could, could a student group show up?
Yep.
Could I, as a school committee member, show up at a school and help?
Definitely.
Going on? I didn't know if it was an issue with people working overtime and contracts and whatever, but if that's something?
Volunteers always welcome. And I think that was part of the conversation, too, that Joe had mentioned that the, the city will be putting out its schedule of sort of those cleanup days, and he wanted to coordinate to some degree. So once we have that schedule, I'll share it out with school committee and, and the larger community as well.
Thank you, Jeremy.
We have a plan on that monument, the stones that, but, yeah, you know, I'm?
We have it on our agenda tomorrow night.
All right, okay.
Pictures and everything.
All right.
Yeah, no, I think it's gonna be taken care of appropriately.
I'm thinking maybe we need to move that monument a little bit, and, I don't know.
We met on that last week, too, looked at a number of scenarios, and again, I think Joe's gonna present tomorrow night to the, to the resource, well, to the Building Needs Committee, you know, with the, and I think it really would solve the issue.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, tonight, we have the second reading of the school calendar before you. Had now a couple of weeks to look at the, at the calendar, if there are any comments. Again, we have, as we historically do, we confer with the FEA, receive their input, look at what, how the dates move from year to year, see where holidays lie, where professional development lies. There were no comments last time. Get to go for, tonight for the vote to get it adopted.
So just quickly to highlight some changes, we're starting after Labor Day this coming school year. So right now, August 28th to September 1st is new teacher orientation and teacher workshop days. No school on September 4th, September 5th. Classes will begin for all students, grades one to 12. And then we'll have, from September 5th to the 7th, will be pre-K and K orientation. And then all pre-K and K students will start on September 8th. And then if you scroll down to the bottom, you can see May 30th is Goodrich graduation, and May 31st is Pittsburgh High graduation, the last day of school. Next year will be on June 14th with no snow days.
John, quick question?
Yes.
On that first week of school, the fifth, sixth, and the seventh are outlined in a blue outline?
Yep.
Does the blue outline signify anything? Because I don't see it in the?
That is pre-K and K orientation. The fifth is the first day that we come back for grades, sorry, the fifth is the first day of school for grades one through 12, and then the sixth and seventh are the pre-K and K orientation. The blue, I think it actually should be black, actually. I can make that change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions on? Okay, seeing none.
Before we move on to budget items, I just want to, as I guess as a public comment or communication, next Thursday night is the Boulder Awards. This year, one of Pittsburgh's own Luisa Fernandez Community Liaison is being recognized at the annual FATV event for her outstanding contributions to civic life through the use of public communications. Many of you know Luisa. She's been actively involved, not only in the schools, but she's also a trustee at the Pittsburgh Art Museum, New View Community, and was very involved in the Pittsburgh Families First Initiative, really over the last couple of years, working with some external groups. And also has been just intimately personally involved in helping the lives of Pittsburgh students and their families. So that event is, again, next Thursday night, starts at 5 o'clock. The, the presentation or the program is at 6:00. And if anybody is interested, tickets are $40 and can be secured through Nate Glenny at FATV. So for donations this evening, we have a couple donations. One's from Alan Tombly for the rent, ride more truck body box, 14 feet. Craig Antassi's submitting that. That's before you. And Mrs. Jarrett just left the building.
She's left.
She just left. For the North End Subaru has made a donation for $3,000 under their Adopt a Classroom Program. Six teachers will receive $500 to purchase classroom materials. So there's two donations. And I guess I'll just kick it back to Mr. Horgan, if he has any comments on the, the policy items on tonight's agenda for action items for the first reading.
At the leisure of the board, do we wanna go through each policy and just kinda get the 101, the headline for each one that's coming up tonight? Seeing some nodding heads, let's do that.
Excuse me? I always prefer to have a total reading, if that's, if that was the question you just asked, rather than hit a headline.
Uh, it wasn't.
Oh, it wasn't, I'm sorry. Well, anyway, as long as you read it.
Could I make a motion to waive the reading of the four policies?
So moved.
I don't, I don't think so. That's not right.
There's two motions?
Call, call it for a vote. Call it for a vote.
May I just make the comment that I think, I see us going down a slippery slope of deciding what can get quickly done. These things were set in place so deliberation can set into us, and it takes time. And I, first reading and a second reading, you know, I always stick up for that in the personal policy meetings or the sub, and as a whole.
Mr. Chair?
I think, before we go to a vote, I'm sorry, Jim, and I know you want to ask, but, but, like, I, I just think that's a really bold and almost dangerous accusation to make, right? Like, the policies that we're going through tonight are open to the public, provided on the agenda, there's no, you know, there's nobody trying to pull a fast one here. And all these policies are very, what I would regard as housekeeping changes that we're making. When I bring policies that are controversial, or I think we're going to have a real debate about, I think I'm pretty upfront about that, and I introduce those as, hey, like, here's the groundwork, let's have a real discussion, real debate. And if anybody thinks, and, you know, clearly Ms. Reynolds thinks that every policy, bar none, regards a full reading and a full discussion, and, you know, when we're changing allergy-free to allergy-aware, I just don't think that requires a debate. And, and that's not up to me, it's up to the majority of this committee. So I respectfully just thank Mr. Walsh for the, for the motion, and I'd like to move on.
May I respond?
Yes.
I did not intend to indicate that everything was up for debate. I just thought everything was up to be read, to educate us as a whole to what we're agreeing to, rather than relying upon any individual's interpretation of what's significant and not. Some words may, may signify something to, that somebody wants to have cleared up.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's my point. Thank you.
With all due respect, I think the time we took discussing that, we would have finished reading the page already, and we could have moved forward.
We wouldn't have.
No?
No, 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 they're very...
Mr. Walsh?
Our packets are available, they're lost on Friday morning. I've read through the four policies that are before us, and if I had concerns or issues, this would be the time I could raise them. And I think if everybody can get the pack at the same time as all of us can, and I guess if you had issues about a particular policy or a statement or a change, this would be a time when you could raise it with Mr. Horgan and the members of the policy committee. I don't think they have to be read word for word. And as, as Mr. Horgan said, they're available to the public, and there'll be a second reading, which again, if there are issues, people can bring it up to members of us before...
In response to that, it, it's not whether, oh, yes, you continue.
So I don't think it's necessary to go through probably twenty-five pages of reading policies where we've all had a chance to look at these and review them and take notes and raise questions if we have any. Thank you.
In, in response, it's not, I am not speaking individually, I'm saying legally, the, the public has, has, it's very important that they hear what we're saying. We don't need to belabor things, but just simply read them. I know it's slowing things down, but I think maybe our society could stand a little slowing down so things can sink in. It's not whether I have an, have an issue, if I do have an issue, I will speak up, of course, I really would. It's another, it's another issue, it's whether we have, follow, what would the word be, not sensible, but it takes, it takes time to read. We, we individuals cannot say, I've read it, and I don't have a problem, therefore we don't need to read it to the public. I think it has to be read to the public. It's available to the public, which is very good, but you have to be reasonable about that. How available is available? You can pick it up, you can hear it on the screen. This is a deliberate body, and I just think we have, have to read it slowly, so it takes time. We need time. That's, you, you understand my position.
Tom?
Thank you. I'm going to agree with Mr. Walsh. We were given these documents and plenty enough time to review, and if there was anything that would, you know, stick out to us, then I would be ready to pounce on it tonight, you know, as it relates to this. Plus, in the subcommittee, we went through this to agree to bring it to the first reading. Now, did we agree to bring it for a vote, or do we want to go through and have them read twenty paragraphs? I mean, is, is that, do we have to do that? Is that, is that procedure? Do we have to have it read publicly, out loud? I mean, if we don't, then...
No, that's why it required a motion to waive the first reading, and then there'll be a second reading before it gets finally approved. But to answer your question, yeah, you know, it's on the agenda as a, as a first reading, and what you're supposed to do is debate about what changes should be made, and then once all the changes are made, you read through it so you can log what changes were incorporated. And then if there's still debate, you go through the second reading and so on. If nobody's suggesting any changes to the policies, it seems reasonable to waive the first reading if there wasn't any debate on the wording to begin with. Now, I think we've exhausted a lot of debate on this motion, there was a first and a second to waive the first reading.
I just, one question. I, I've read them all, I had one, the, one policy is fourteen pages.
Yep.
I had one question on it, and it's going to, I'm going to get an answer, I'm going to vote for this, and I, I, I would vote to waive the reading, and I'll get an answer on that one question on school day. And what it is, the school day is represented by the time between midnight the night before to thirty minutes after the end of the instructional day.
Where are you reading from? School choice?
That would be on about page ten, under school day, in the red. Now, as a former school principal, I always took, the, the reason was when the student left their house in the morning, I took responsibility till a half an hour or reasonable time after school that they got home. So I just, out of fourteen pages, that was the only question I had, I think.
Yeah.
Committee's done a good job, and I would like to move for a vote.
This is just a glossary. This is just a glossary definition?
Yeah.
School day is represented by the time between midnight the night before to thirty minutes after the end of the instructional day, and you would have it read thirty minutes before the instructional day begins, or what?
For me, it was always when the student left their front door, the school assumed responsibility.
All right.
Get on the bus, walk to school.
So that's fully within this circle of definition then?
Yeah.
It's a little broader?
It was just a little different from what I had been used to as a, as a principal. But, you know, I, I, I'd make a motion to move the motion. Motion made to move the four items under policy.
We're to waive the first reading.
Wa, waive the first reading.
And then we have a motion and a second.
Motion and a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have a show, please? That's one, two, three, four, five. And two opposed? Two opposed. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would you please clarify who the second was on that motion, please?
Um...
Mr. Hughes.
Sure, the second was. Was it you, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Next one, action items?
Yep.
Next, going into action items. Is it the committee's wish to bundle the action items? You want to take them individually? I think we have to. Okay. All right. Action items twenty-three dash twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-three. Approve the superintendent's recommendation to retain the Mass Association School Committee's contract policy service to assist Pittsburgh committee, school committee to update policies, handbooks, and contracts over the next three years. Motion to accept. Motion made, seconded to accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Twenty-three dash two-five-one, approve the superintendent's recommendation to allow Long's Joe Middle School sixth grade students to attend an out-of-state field trip on May twenty-sixth to Flume Gorge, Lincoln, New Hampshire. To let them go. Motion to accept.
Second.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Next, twenty-three dash two-fifty-two, approve the donation of a fourteen-foot truck box body to support the Pittsburgh High School Athletic Department and Equipment Storage at the Pittsburgh High School Softball Field from Riedmore Truck Parts.
So moved.
Motion made. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Next, twenty-three dash two-fifty-three, approve the donation of three thousand dollars to support six teachers in purchasing classroom materials from North End Subaru. Motion to accept. Motion made to accept.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous. Thank you. Twenty-three dash two-fifty-four, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the first reading of policy fifty-one zero-three dash one zero-one, school choice. Motion to accept. Motion made, seconded to accept. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Twenty-three dash two-fifty-five.
Hold on, Mr.?
Yes.
I think, I think we had an opposed.
We had?
No, no, not, not an opposed, but that, that is a very entangled, entangled thing that's going to be difficult for, to, it was difficult to explain it to us. And however, I, I, we have to go along with it, I believe. And then do go along with it, I'm just saying it's tricky.
I'm, I'm not sure what you're, what you're asking, Ms. Reynolds.
No, I'm not asking you to do anything, no, no.
All right. Where was I? Two, twenty-three, two-fifty-five?
Yes.
Prove the superintendent's recommendation to accept the first reading of policy fifty-one twenty, assignment of students to schools. Motion to accept.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. Twenty-three dash two-fifty-six, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the first reading of policy fifty-seven zero-one. Has zero-three, life-threatening food allergies. Motion made to accept. Do we have a second? Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. Thank you. Finally, twenty-three dash two-fifty-seven, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the first reading of policy fifty-seven thirteen, health, wellness, and safety policy. Motion to accept. Motion made.
Second.
Seconded to accept. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. Executive session is not needed at this time. We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Second. Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.